Good evening. We will begin our council meeting. We note that we have a quorum present, six of our members. Councilman Rushton is not able to be with us tonight and will not be here. With that then, we will turn to our opening ceremony. Councilmember Tom.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I just want to invite all of you to stand up and do a pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we turn to our minutes. We have the minutes from our meetings of May 20th and May 27th for action by the council. Councilman Vincent.
May I move for approval of the minutes of May 20th and May 27th?
We have the motion to approve before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. The motion is properly before us. Any discussion to the motion to approve the minutes? Seeing that, we'll place the motion for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes from May 20th and May 27th, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go to our recognitions, item number six on our agenda, and we turn to Councilman Jim Thorpe.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. Here, my forceful is here tonight, and please just stand up and I will read this letter very quick. I would like to nominate Detective Fosmore for the Employee of the Month, especially for his diligent work on WVPD case number 13I033200. The child abuse homicide of Amen of Amen Oger Kayla Sanders. These are the most emotionally challenging circumstances we could ever work under. His professionalism and dedication to seek justice for her eventually led to the solving of the case and the arrest of the eldest perpetrator. On August 9, 2013, officers were dispatched to Odyssee Jai at 76 Rockwood Way and room number 187. Detectives responded to the scene and conducted a sudden unexplained infant death investigation. Interviews with others in the home did not yield explainable information regarding the manner of death for Kayla. Why did this little baby just die? Several bottles of prescription medication, including liquid, a tamponia pouf, were observed by detectives. Detective Fosmore had processed the crime scene and attended the autopsy, one of the most unsettling experiences in a police officer career. Kayla's stomach contents appear similar to the death of an overdose victim. How could an eight-month-old overdose? Detectives have collected multiple pieces of evidence, and chiasone was found inside the eyedropper used to give Kayla medicine. Someone had caused her death by administering an overdose of the medicine to quiet her crying. Eight months after Kayla's death, the Salt Lake County District Attorney's Office filed felony first child abuse homicide charges against Jean Richen. On March 13, 2014, I believe, because it's a number printed out right here, it's 2013, so 34, so I believe it's 2014, is that right, Mike?
This is 2013.
13?
We were arrested on 14.
13?
He was arrested in 14.
Okay, yeah, because they gave me their number right here, March 13 and 2013, so I don't know which one I can read. Detective Fosmore assembled an arrest team located this spec and booked him into jail on a 1007 warrant without incident. This case is a perfect example of his outstanding work as a homicide detective. He brought justice to the most precious among us, a child. Sadly, this was the third submissive baby that Fosmore responded to within two months during 2013. This past year was extremely busy for him. He worked as the case manager or co-case on six homicides or officer-involved shootings. He was also assigned 94 active cases and worked on another 133 cases, a total of 227 cases during this time period, most of which were violent crimes. This is a monumental accomplishment in one year, and I would like to recognize his efforts submitted by Smith-Hawke and Detective Sargent. Thank you.[423.22][423.22](Applause) So, if you'd come up here. Are you want to say something? You can come up here and say something if you want to.
Oh, I think I'm good, thank you.[471.81][471.81](Laughter) Thanks to Sergeant Hawke for nominating me, that's what I'd like to say.
Okay.
Well, thank you, and just because I have personal interest in those who defend the defenseless, especially children. Children in my public service career have always been a priority for me, and so a very special thank you for working with those exceptionally difficult cases and for looking out for the interests of the defenseless, those children in our society. So, thank you very much, we appreciate that, and believe you represent the best of our efforts in our police scene here in the West Valley City.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Then we will move forward. Thank you. Appreciate your being here tonight to receive their recognition. We will now move to our public comment period. We have one individual who signed up, and we had an individual I spoke with on the phone, and by the way, when people have complaints and they want them shared with the council, I encourage them to come and use the opportunity to participate in this discussion. And there was a gentleman who came earlier because he thought it was 4:30 meeting where he could speak, not the 6:30. But his health wouldn't allow him to stay, and so I will just mention for him his issues. He was very concerned that we had changed our street signs from green to black. He says they're harder to see at night because they blend in with the background more, and he wanted to make sure that the council was aware that he wasn't happy with that. It was hard for them to see, and he thought we ought to stay with the green background or some other background that was more visible. So that was his concern, that he wanted shared with the council. And it was Bart?
Lloyd.
Lloyd Barker. Lloyd Barker. Lloyd Barker. So, he has had his concerns shared with the council and city manager.
Thank you.
We also have someone who signed up, Mr. Laker. If you would come forward, then you can have your opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Matthew Laker. I reside in District Four at 4903 Valley Drive. With regard to the Employee of the Month presentation, I would like to state for the record I've never had a negative experience with a police officer or the fire department in West Valley City. I've had excellent experiences with both. That said, my comments are a little more negative, and I'll just go off my written comments here. Two weeks ago, the county, the council voted to proceed to milestone two of the McQuarrie contract development. This was at a cost of about $330,000 to $350,000. The objective is to continue to investigate the feasibility of the deal and determine if the city should proceed to milestone three. Following discussion prior to the vote, it was obvious the council did this with full knowledge that very little additional information pertinent to this decision would be made available through the milestone two report, basically sharpening the pencil and selection of vendors from a very short list. As elected representatives of the citizens of West Valley City, obviously it's the council's obligation to know and understand the sentiment of their constituents. Given the discussions I observed prior to the vote to proceed to stage two, it is obvious that multiple members of the council had not stated the issue in any detail. It follows that they had not informed members of their districts in regard to the particulars of the deal and therefore had not assessed opinion. As a taxpayer and a forced participant in the proposed contract, I would have preferred to see a more informed council decision or a delay of the decision until such time as a better assessment of public opinion could be made. That opportunity being lost, I hope the council can proceed with their due diligence in a timely fashion to avoid unnecessary further expenditure of resources. I have heard discussion about the possibility of conducting a poll, sending out a postcard, or otherwise informing a significant sampling of the residents, but have seen no evidence of this taking place. It sounds like from previous discussion that some of the other cities are engaging at this, at this stage in a much more aggressive public opinion survey. I would very much like to hear some kind of update on any efforts being made to inform the public and subsequently understand their sentiment. My fear of the current path is partially based on the superficial and one-sided information available through the city's website. It currently directs viewers to the 96-page Stage One Report written by McQuarrie, to one of two relatively neutral newspaper articles, or to a website championing the deal. It is my understanding that McQuarrie put up this website. Additional information on the city's site appears to have been pulled directly from that same McQuarrie-sponsored website. In other words, it is extremely one-sided and presents no opposing opinions. If this is the city's primary method of educating the public, I suspect the city does not intend to present a dissenting opinion on the deal. To show only a carefully crafted positive outlook on the proposal, I think would be a serious disservice to the community and would represent a significant breach in public trust. It is my personal opinion that the negatives associated with the proposal far outweigh the potential positives and that the public should be more thoroughly informed. Obviously, the cost of a very aggressive public campaign would be negligible compared to the, excuse me, compared to the costs being incurred in simply further developing the deal at this point. I look forward to any update that can be provided as to the status of the council's public campaign efforts. I am specifically interested in the form in which the relative, the related data will be presented to the council. This really is not a matter of gut feel or general impression as far as, as far as voting on this deal. It deserves a well-planned, statistically significant education and polling effort that will yield the kind of data that can be used to effectively inform a decision of this magnitude. And certainly that can be achieved, if not by city staff, through a contracted outside company. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And he stayed within his five minutes. He must have planned that. Okay, we don't have anyone else to speak from the public, so we go now to city manager comments.
Thanks, Mayor. Maybe it will take just a minute or two. I could probably partially answer the gentleman's question and at least describe both what we've done work-wise on the public outreach process and what that will look like, as well as maybe contrast a little bit why West Valley City is the city, is in the place it is from an evaluation and a knowledge standpoint as opposed to other cities. So first, from describing the public process standpoint, just as an update, which is actually a good venue to do it in, since we've got the public exposure of that as well as relaying it to you. What we have considered is a public outreach process that would reach across a number of months. As you all know, that this evaluation process would stretch across the summer and into the fall, and any final decision as to whether or not to proceed with the McQuarrie proposal would likely therefore take place somewhere in the September, October-ish timeframe. And so contemplating that, the public outreach process that we have considered to this point, which of course could be added to in any vein as well, consists of, and I'll tick off some of the items that were mentioned there and confirm and add to them. We actually have a draft right now of a mailer that would go out to all residents of the city. It's about the size of a, you know, kind of an advertising card, roughly about a large postcard. Two-sided, basically outlines the points of the McQuarrie proposal under consideration just for general knowledge so people's awareness would be raised. Second, we're scheduling a series of open house format type meetings, at least one a month that would start in next month, July, if I remember right. One would be in July, one would be August, one would be September, and if we wanted more after that, we would also include those. Our contemplation of the timing of those really does bear to when more information would be available in a more concrete fashion as to things like costs, who developers would be, those sorts of things that were also referred to. In addition to that, we would also be constantly and on a daily basis looking for updates that would be appropriate on the city's social media connections, either the website, Facebook page, those sorts of things, as we garner interest from and as we proactively push those out there to the residents in the city. In addition to that, as we proceed down the milestones and to any particular decision at the end as to whether proceed or not, there would be actual publicly held by resolution and/or ordinance and therefore public hearing decisions that the council would make that would be open for an actual public comment kind of period at that venue in addition to the open house format. So clearly across the months of the summer and into the fall, we're going to be in long evaluation, and there will be many opportunities for both reaching out to the residents and hearing from the residents, and we certainly, I certainly know the council wants to do that, and you have made that clear. Speaking real quickly to the position of West Valley as opposed to where other cities might be, I might actually just make comment that one of the reasons we, that we may be ahead of that curve a little bit frankly is from our exposure and commitment and actual involvement standpoint as compared to other cities. There are cities that are out there that literally, although we have been discussing this as a potential for over a year at the staff level and in public since October 23rd of last fall, there are cities that literally have not engaged until recently, within the last few weeks, and so they are hurrying to play catch-up out there from an assessment standpoint amongst their own staff and their own elected officials. West Valley City, on the other hand, had the foresight to assign people to the task and the consideration that had been involved in those conversations and that evaluation literally from the day one of the consideration. Frankly, right now, I have three senior staff executives that are involved with evaluating, questioning, coming to arrival of understanding of how this deal would work at a daily level. And as those points come about and important milestones are accomplished, like the milestone one report, for example, we clearly are coming in and reporting to you now on a weekly basis as to what updates to that are. I only illustrate that from the standpoint of there is some level at least of comfort information-wise, not even just from the exposure to the McQuarrie project per se over the last year, but frankly from more proactive involvement from the city's standpoint to Utopia generally and the network build over the last two years, which once again many cities have not. So if I can say anything in promotion of and in defense of the city and the city's efforts and knowledge of, I don't believe the council is moving forward without information or good concrete information. I believe the way you're moving forward is with an understanding of what the process will be and where those informational points that are pertinent and important to the decision make are coming and when they will come, whereas other cities unfortunately are in a lot more of a catch-up sort of scenario. And that's all. Thank you, sir.
Any other items or comments?
Nope. I think that's good.
Okay, thank you. To the council, city council comments. Councilman Bueller.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one comment on the McQuarrie proposal, and that is that the people that came to the public meeting and voiced opposition to it are, in my experience, just speaking for myself, not representative of the public, and that it is a much closer question of those that have emailed me and called me and commented to me and asked me what's going on, and that there is much more favorable response to going forward than was presented at that one public meeting. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. I would comment, I get both. I've gotten, it's been about half and half. Of course, because I voted no, I probably get more of the no ones, I don't know. One question I did have to clarify on the public hearing process, those open house or whatever meetings, what will those be like? They're not going to be like a city council meeting, so is that just going to be questions and answers? Who's going to do that? Who will provide the responses?
We've actually used that format before, sir, in other projects that had great community and public interest, and the way we conduct those usually is we'll set up a meeting place, for example, a multipurpose room, or maybe the fitness center, or maybe the cultural center, whatever venue might be deemed advantageous, meaning exposure to the residents. Then we'll usually have a set of staff and/or council members, depending on the situation, who are really there frankly for more informal and one-on-one discussion as opposed to more of a lecture format. They're able, actually able to meet with folks individually as they come in over usually something like a two-hour timeframe and discuss the issue and answer questions for them specifically.
Okay, will there be representatives from McQuarrie there, or?
Could be, and depending on their attendant, I mean their availability, they've actually been very willing to attend those. Other folks that might be useful to that process and who have also been willing to attend some of these meetings are the actual providers, the internet service providers who currently use the Utopia network.
Will there be any others who have publicly opposed it? And not me, not me, I'm not there. It's not going to be my role, but for example, Utah Taxpayers Association.
Usually in the past, what we have done is obviously, of course, invited and geared this towards our own residents, and in that mix, there are many people that usually in these items are opposed. However, we wouldn't invite, or at least it wouldn't be our normal practice to invite what would be considered opposing parties, like the Utah Taxpayers Association, for example.
Now, just so you know, I would favor that. I would like to have someone speak for it and someone speak against it to give the public a chance to see both sides of the issue, but that's up to the council. I'm not here to define how we will handle that, but I always like to hear both sides of an issue and just see what the comments are. The interesting thing is, if I might make a comment, and that is, obviously there are those who believe that cities shouldn't be in this business, and when they make that decision, it doesn't matter what other reasons there are. That's the end of the discussion. So they stop listening at that point because they say you shouldn't be in the business, therefore anything you say I will dismiss. Well, we're already in the business, so we need to have someone other than someone who uses that argument. To me, that argument is almost a waste of time because it's already been done. We've crossed that bridge, and I wouldn't say burned the bridge behind us, but we can't go back across the bridge. We can't get out of what we are in. So I would really, and I don't know that it's Utah Taxpayers Association, but rather than having a discussion about should the city be in this business, let's get beyond that and let's discuss the proposal and say what are the good points and the bad points about it. And it would be helpful to have someone do that. So it would, I'd just say it would be nice. I try and do that when I hold my town meetings to say, you know, and I list the good points. And what that does is some people end up saying, ooh, that sounds good, and I also list some negatives, and that may change or not. Typically, people will find that that's helpful to them to kind of come to their conclusion on their own. But I think it's unproductive to have a discussion about, well, you shouldn't be in the business, let's have that discussion, I think. Okay, we can waste our time on it, but neither side will change based on a discussion of that issue. They won't change. The issue we need to address is the McQuarrie proposal, its benefits and where the risks are, and discuss those openly, so.
If I might add to that, Mayor, yeah, I think that's exactly correct in the position the city is in, and also does sort of add more weight to the difference between perhaps West Valley's position as opposed to any other city, particular city's position. I think a lot of the other cities are still wrestling, they have not philosophically settled that question in their mind of, do I even like the utility fee model concept, whereas we, I believe as a city, have moved on to more of the objective evaluation of does the deal work or not. I think that's correct. And in that vein, in terms of having somebody at a representative kind of more along that line and maybe not favorable to it in a open house format is good. Once again, I think UTA, just as an example, is probably not a good one because their mindset really is about you guys really just shouldn't even be in this business at all, which as you mentioned, I think we've gotten past that point. But if there's another entity out there along that line, yeah, I think that would be fine. So maybe we need to think about who that might be.
Well, just if we get information out there, the other, the other thing that I didn't hear, which I might, which I had mentioned, I think would be helpful, is to have a written summary, you know, go out to, not a postcard, but actually some more meat and detail, perhaps sent out with that monthly garbage fee billing, because that goes to most of our residents. Not so voluminous that it causes an increase in the cost, but just to include in there some information. One of the fascinating things as I held my town meetings was most people have no idea. You know, they've heard a few things from the public or the one about, that I also saw, and it's actually on a website, it's actually on the Utah Taxpayers Association, I think, website. Someone emailed it to me and said, yeah, they'll turn off your water if you don't pay this fee, which would be fascinating, but obviously incorrect. There's a lot of misinformation out there, and those, that's really one of the questions I don't think's been answered, is what do you do if someone doesn't pay? In fact, that's being worked out still, along with a number of issues. And some good issues have been, actually arise in those discussions that actually help in going back to McQuarrie to say, has this been resolved? And so, so hopefully those will take place soon. And they're all, they're fun to go to, even if you just sit in the back and listen. Anyway, sorry, I got off onto a little discussion there, but if the council has specific concerns... Anyway, sorry, I got off onto a little discussion there, but if the council has specific concerns, they should weigh in with those with Mr. Pyle, as to format, as to what issues are covered and how that's dealt with, timing, whatever you feel appropriate, okay? We'll just leave that to each of you individually to talk with you. We'll move forward now with the general part of our meeting, item number eight, and this is to enact, and this is the part of the code, I guess, 3-10, 1400P of the West Valley City Municipal Code, creating the Utah Cultural Celebration Center Foundation Committee. This is a committee that initially the city council forms the board, and once that is in place, eventually with the asking of people to serve as board members, that will be modified that then the board members can be other than the city council. And that can be clarified as to who I think they talked about, maybe having a representative of the council on there. I think that's kind of standard as a member of that. But eventually that will go from the city council to the others. And this is the code to set up their initial formatting of that and the regulations around it. So I think that's the issue. Any further thing that we ought to discuss there? And we note for the record that we have discussed these items previously in a city council meeting in the one we refer to as our study session, and we did that last week. And so we have information already on this and each item on the rest of our agenda. Then with that, comments or action from the council? Or discussion? Councilman Vincent.
Mayor, move for approval of Ordinance 1431.
We have a motion before us to approve Ordinance 14-31. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. The motion is properly before us, is there discussion to this motion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving Ordinance 14-31 to modify the code to create the Utah Cultural Celebration Center Foundation Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. Now we go to Resolution 14-91 to authorize the city to purchase performance appraisal software from Halogen Software Company. And this is where the current software is no longer functioning, is no longer supported. In fact, the company has been bought out and they don't even produce it anymore. So it's not supported, and so we need to get something in place that does work. They've done the analysis and found one that meets the needs of the city that they will go out and purchase, assuming that the council approves this resolution. Anything you need to add there, Mr. Pyle, on that?
No, sir.
Okay. Then to the council for action or discussion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Resolution 14-91.
We have the motion before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. I think our recorder's good at keeping track of who those are, and you'll always tell us if you don't. So any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll place the motion for a vote. All in favor of approving Resolution 14-91 for performance appraisal software purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go to item number 10 on our agenda. Unfinished business. This is the application number ZT-10-2013, which will consider Ordinance Number 14-28 of our title. This is regarding development plan requirements for single-family and two-family dwellings. We note that there was a public hearing held last time on our last meeting and closed, and there were people who commented during that. It does not appear that there are people here tonight that are even, willing to be concerned that we're not having an open one, I don't think. But we did hold that and met the requirements, so now it's back before us for discussion or action. To the council.
Mayor, move for approval of Ordinance 1428, the study session version, which I had one amendment tonight in the study session.
Okay, that motion is before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is properly before us for further discussion. I think with that motion, we clarify that I believe that that is available on the website or information that is publicly available, that version. The amendment that was made, though, let's go over that so it's clear for the record that other than what we had in writing, I believe that that amendment, would you like to do that, Mr.?
I would, Mayor. The ordinance attached to our regular meeting agenda tonight was amended to include that stucco would be allowed material, although it is not added points to the tabulation of points in the point system. Stucco would be allowed on certain features, not to exceed 15% of the exterior of the building.
Thank you. Appreciate that clarification. So I think that that is clearly before us, further discussion to the motion. Seeing none, then we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving this motion to approve Application ZT-10-2013 or Ordinance 14-28, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We now go to item number 11 on our agenda. This is the consent agenda, and there are, there are a number of reappointments to various committees or reappointments for various lengths of time. These are on our consent agenda, and we will deal with them as a whole unless someone on the council wants to deal with one individually or any member. So.
Mayor, I move for approval of the nine items on the consent agenda. I'd note in doing so that none of these people, other than those that may be on the council appear, otherwise I would have been nice to read their names and recognize them here in public, but seeing that I move for approval of the nine items on the consent agenda.
Second? Motion is properly before us and properly seconded, so that is before us, and I guess we could take 60 seconds and read those names, or no? Okay. They're there on the agenda, so, but none of them are here, not even one of them that's on the council, so. Seeing no further discussion, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda resolution for appointment of, or reappointment of individuals to various city committees, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. We're completed with the regular business of our council meeting. But we do have a need for an executive session, which is item number 12. And so we need a motion that we adjourn our council meeting and convene our executive session for the purpose of, I believe, is it covering both pending litigation and the potential disposition of real property? Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Those are the two. To the council then for action.
Move that we adjourn this meeting and enter into an executive session to discuss pending litigation and the potential disposition of real property.
Thank you. And do we have?
Second.
Second. The motion is properly before us. Seeing no discussion, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Our regular session is adjourned.